Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 28th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 5th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. So, little square pieces of paper in the back on the table. If you are neither the agent or the applicant on an item and wish to speak on it, I would ask that you fill that out and give that, hand it to Jerry, and she'll get it to me for the agenda items. I do want to mention, at the end of this meeting, specifically, it's Item 11, Ordinance Amendment OA 22-01, the Hard Rock Mining Ordinance. And so that if you are here for that item and wish to speak on that item, that's just fine. Just note that that item is recommended by staff to be continued until the April, help me out, last April 25th meeting. And so I don't, what I don't want to happen is you to sit here the whole meeting, find out that we're going to continue that item, and then we're going to continue it until the April 25th, and hence waste time. So, that being said, you're welcome to stay and speak on the item as well. I just wanted to make sure that that was noted. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Roll call. Note that everyone is here, less Jim, and Debs here from the Board. First item on the agenda is approval of the March 14th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the March 14th, 2022 minutes. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item two is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda has the consent items three through six, followed by our normal business items seven through 11, ending with the County Board Report and our end-of-meeting items 12 through 16. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Motion for approval. Is there a second to the agenda?
Second.
Motion and second to approve today's agenda. Further discussion? None, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director, the Consent Agenda. The following items have been placed on the Consent Agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff member, or Audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review CU 1218 for Paul and Don Marslow to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. And staff is recommending to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit CU 1218 to the April 25th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review CU 1536 for Donald and Margaret Norton to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house in a rural residential district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 1536 with conditions. Item number five is Minor Plat MPL 2208 for Diamond Spur Lodge LLC, Diamond Spur Properties LLC, Andrew and Alicia Edson, to combine three lots to create Lot 9R of the Forks at Remington Ranch subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of Minor Plat MPL 2208 with conditions. And finally, item six is Layout Plan LPL 2210 for Joni McVeigh. Jim Peterson is the agent to subdivide and prelots 1 to 12 of McVeigh Valley subdivision. And the staff is recommending approval of the withdrawal of Layout Plan LPL 2210 per the request of the agent.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull for consideration?
No, not at this time.
Are there any items that the Board wishes to pull for consideration? Okay. I did get a speaker request form regarding, excuse me, that wasn't MPL, that was CU 22-01. So, I don't have any, does anyone in the audience wish to pull any of the items from the Consent Agenda, three, four, five, and six? For those of you that are not familiar with our process, items three, four, five, and six will be voted on at the same time with one vote. Noting none, staff recommends approval of today's Consent Agenda, items three through six is their motion.
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chutimal Saboot, Planning Department. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Request CU 22 dash, I'm sorry, 2201 to allow vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Eric Thompson, and he is here on Zoom if you have any question for him. Local contact is Buddy Custer. The location of the property is 23844 Deegan Drive. The current zoning is a rural residential district. The zoning ordinance lists seven criterias that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of Conditional Use Permit application. They are as follows. Criteria one, is a no. A vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence and should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, no. Vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. Therefore, the requested use should not change the residential use of the property and should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, no. The requested use should not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Criteria four, yes. The vacation home rental utilized the existing on-site wastewater treatment system. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, yes. Access is off Deegan Drive via an existing approach. Vacation home rentals are considered a residential use. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Criteria six, yes. The property is zoned rural residential district. Vacation home rentals are allowed with an approved Conditional Use Permit with this zoning district. Criteria seven, yes. The future land use is rural residential district. The requested use is allowed within this district with an approved Conditional Use Permit. The property contains a single family residence and a purchase. And it also has, and the existing on-site wastewater treatment system has a construction permit and a current operating permit. Also, this property has some, an approved variance for a section rise up from 58 feet to 33 feet. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. The one comment from 911 has a concern about the addressing. So, staff performed a site visit and found that the address was posted at the end of the driveway. However, the number, the address number is not posted on the structure, which staff already spoke with the applicant, and he's aware of that, and it's also included as a condition of approval. The applicant submitted all the required documents under Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 319E. Staff recommends approval of this Conditional Use Permit CU 22-01 with 16 conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Go ahead.
How close is the Hill City line to this place? It must be right on. I looked it up, and I couldn't find it where it was. I'm just, for my own...
Right. So, here is, on the picture, check the highway 385 to the south, and then you take the China Gouge. So, this is up in the hill to take probably 15, 20 minutes to go to the city. Do you have a question about how far?
I'm from the Hill City area. I know where Deegan Drive is. That's why I was curious how far up it actually went, the Hill City line went. It goes up quite a ways.
Is the blue line the corporate limit?
The green line here is the city limit of the Hill City.
Okay. All right.
Yep, right here.
Very good. Okay. Yep, that takes care of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Chutima, just your condition number 10, looks like you've got a typo. It says that prior to, and you've got the word "and," I think it needs to be crossed off, and then just operation "and interior."
Thank you.
Nothing major. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none and hearing none, I do have a note here that the landowner is on Zoom. Does the person on Zoom wish to speak on this at all, or are you only there to answer questions?
I'm here just to answer questions if needed.
Perfect. Okay. With that, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit CU 22-01 with 16 conditions, noting the deletion of the word "and," "an" in the fourth word in item number 10. Is there, is there a motion?
I say move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Jason Thonison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number eight is Conditional Use Permit 22-08 to allow an event center to include business meetings, social gatherings, and wedding receptions. The owners are Andrew and Alicia Edson, operating under Diamond Spur Lodge LLC and Diamond Spur Properties LLC. Their agent is Jeffrey Crocker from KLJ Engineering. Property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Highway 385 and Mill Iron Drive near Three Forks area. Use involves 1.73 acres, currently zoned Highway Service District. It is vacant of any structures or utilities. Access will be taken off of Mill Iron Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in their review of Conditional Use Permit applications. There on the screen, I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. Requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the requested use should not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Number four, the applicant will need to obtain South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources and Pennington County approval of the on-site wastewater treatment system prior to operation. The applicants will need to address surface runoff concerns regarding their erosion and sediment control plan. It is not clear from the plan whether the discharge will be prevented from exiting the property and into Spring Creek. Number five, access will be taken off Mill Iron Drive, which provides two means of ingress and egress, one onto Highway 385 and one onto Highway 16. Number six, the requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located with an approved CP. And lastly, number seven, future land use is identified as Highway Service District. The proposed use is consistent within that district. And as the property sits today, it is vacant of any structures or utilities. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Black Hills Energy stated that as long as our current facilities are still covered by an easement with this future proposal, Black Hills Energy does not have an issue with the proposal, and this is included as a condition of approval. County Highway also stated that approach permits must be filed with the Highway Department prior to issuance of a building permit if access is to be taken from Mill Iron Drive for all three proposed approaches. They also stated that with the asphalt parking lots increasing the area of impervious surface, has any documentation been provided to show stormwater runoff leaving the site is not increased? Again, that is covered as a condition of approval. There were no other objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the requested use requires a parking ratio of three persons to one vehicle parking space. The applicant has requested 300-person occupancy for a total of 100 parking spaces required. 67 of these spaces will be provided on-site. You can see on the screen, this is the overall layout plan for the proposed use. There are 67 parking spaces here. They are proposing an additional 36 spots to a lot to the south. They are requesting a variance through the Board of Commissioners. That variance will be heard on April 5th. Board of Commissioners meeting and approval will be required prior to any building permit applications being submitted. The applicants are currently working to plat the area, these three lots into one lot. You just heard that earlier today on the Consent Agenda as a minor plat. Building plans for the proposed structure will need to be submitted for review and comment to the South Dakota Department of Health and the State Fire Marshal prior to building permit application submittal. The applicants will need to address surface runoff concerns regarding their erosion and sediment control plan. Staff has received no objections or concerns regarding this request, and staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with land uses along the South Highway 16 corridor. This is a rendering of what the facility will look like. With that, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 22-08 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Jason, lot six, will that be paved? That will be, I have heard.
I believe so. The applicants are in the audience if you have any questions for them.
Further questions for staff? Here's my questions. What was the variance that you talked about?
It's a variance to allow the parking lot to be located more than 200 feet from the proposed use.
Okay. I guess I'm, I'm more concerned about the drainage and the relative positioning of the site right next to the creek. I think the event center looks nice. I'm good with all of that. So, my question is, is if we move forward with the Conditional Use Permit today, and we make them as conditions, that there needs to be the, not only the stormwater detention, but the treatment of that before it enters the creek? What is the mechanism from the county permitting side that would require that? Is that required as a submittal prior to building permit?
That'll go along with the building permit.
Got it. Thank you. With that, if no one has further questions for staff, we'll go, I have a speaker request form from Andy Edson, if I got that right. Go ahead and state your name, please.
Yeah, good morning, Andy Edson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I've got a few comments, and then I'll also definitely answer any questions or concerns that anybody may have. We also did bring a couple other renderings of four plans and anything. If anybody would like to take a look at those, we can definitely, I'll bring them up.
Okay.
But, and I'm also representing my wife, Alicia. She wasn't able to be here. This is her business, and I'm on her, here on her behalf. So, just a little bit of history, my wife, Alicia, graduated from high school in Hill City, and her parents, Rich and Lee and Jensen here, live right across Spring Creek there on the Double Diamond Ranch. And my wife and I built the Diamond Spur Lodge there. You can kind of see the corner of it on that ranch a few years ago, you know, as an investment in the property in the greater Hill City area, in the Rapid City area. So, as, you know, one thing we've always looked at is these lots over here, what we could bring to the area as a development on those lots. And this is our idea of bringing in a event center, recreational center that is, you know, can allow all kinds of events there, right? I mean, we both work for a company that does corporate retreats, and we've actually, my wife has actually had one at the Diamond Spur Lodge, where she brought her coworkers out, and, you know, we just see a lot of need for those. And we've been actually working closely with the Hill City Economic Development Corporation, and they've been, you know, one of their items is to look for a center or event center that can bring people to the area, not just in the peak seasons, but also something that can be available for use in the off-seasons. And that's really where we're looking to capitalize, that there's all kinds of events. I mean, this past weekend, we're from Bennington, which is outside Omaha, Nebraska. I went to Elk Mountain Federation Conference, or not a conference, but a fundraiser, right? And those type of events are the ones in addition that we can, we could see being an area, whether it's a Pheasants Forever, a Ducks Unlimited, and things like that. So, while it will primarily be, you know, an event center, you know, maybe there's an after-prom party that Hill City wants to have and things like that. We really want to definitely open it up to the community and think of a lot of outside-the-box ideas. And, you know, our events director, Maya Crumwell, is here today, and she's, I mean, she's got tons of ideas that, you know, she worked with the Rapid City downtown place for a while, and she's got a lot of good ideas, too. So, a couple comments I just wanted to, I took a look at this last night, and, like I said, we're, my wife and I are very excited about this, we're very passionate about this. We just want to make sure we can address any concerns or questions you have. So, I kind of went through the conditions, and I just have a couple questions if you don't mind me asking.
Sure. We may or may not be able to answer them. I might need Jason to come back up, but go ahead.
Okay. Nope, appreciate it. Recommendation number four, was that an address be assigned? Just wanted to check on the status of that. Is that something that we should be doing, or are we working with Jason on that?
So, that'll be assigned during the building permit review process.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The other one, item number five, building plans should be submitted for review and comment to the South Dakota Department of Health and State Fire Marshal. I think since, you know, we've been doing some investigation there, and I think this is under the County Fire Administration jurisdiction.
He'll be your point of contact to coordinate that through the State Fire Marshal.
Okay. So, they've been referencing us to Mr. Jerome Harvey, so. All right. Number nine, that prior to operation and easement be recorded with register of deeds for the walkway to get from Lot 6 over to the rest of the event center. Currently, there is eight-foot right-of-way along the front of the property for utilities, and I'd like to recommend that we be able to use that easement there versus getting another potential easement. Again, you might not be able to answer that, but that's kind of what we suggest.
Right.
Have a walkway right across the front of the lot.
Sure. The intent behind the easement is to keep pedestrians out of the right-of-way, so that we don't have pedestrians walking down the road.
Yep.
On a designated sidewalk is what we're looking for.
Okay. And then, I mean, maybe I'll just kind of address the parking lot now, right? While it's not ideal, I think this is, this is a solution that we've, we've come across Right, wrong, or different, we were under the impression that this would follow a five-to-one ratio. There's, you know, there's really not an event center listed as a very specific use. And, you know, just in early planning and drawings and sketches and layouts, we kind of planned on that five-to-one. So, this kind of came up on us here a couple months ago, and, you know, Lot 7 and 8, which has since combined to Lot 7R, that had already been sold. And so, the closest one we could find was Lot 6 there, to be able to accommodate additional parking. So, I will say that, right now, the parking on the property will hold capacity of 200 people at the three-to-one. And, I mean, I can't tell you exactly how many events over 200 will have in a specific year, but my guess is that it's not going to be the normal, for sure. I mean, maybe there's five, maybe there's seven, but I think the majority of weddings or family reunions and other events that we're kind of envisioning there, we feel that most of those will be able to be accommodated with those 67 spots at the capacity of 200. So, one question that I just, I just have to ask is that, you know, if we were able to use the five-to-one, then we would be able to accompany or accommodate the 300 people at that event center. So, I don't know if we just have a, you know, I know Jason did some research in the planning, group has done some research on that.
I don't know the differences between the parking requirements.
The standard that we use for these historically for other event centers was the three-to-one parking ratio.
Okay.
Because it seems to fit a little bit better. If you assume five people per one car are going to show up to all of these events, we don't feel it's realistic. So, the three-to-one is more realistic. So, that's what we decided to go with. Like you said, it is not specified in our zoning ordinance what an event center is for parking, but we do feel that that is the best fit for it.
Okay. Normally, we would follow staff's recommendations on something like this, because if you run out and people start parking along the road and into your neighbors' parking lots, then it comes back as an issue that wasn't taken care of on the front end of the design and the planning of the, of the event center. So, I guess it sounds to me like there's still some items to be worked through here with regards to access to that parking lot and the recommendation.
Well, Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, can you use your neighbor's parking lot when you're doing these kind of events? Because I know in Rapid City, you can do, you can park within, if someone agrees with you, within 300 feet of your building. Can he work with, I don't know when your events, will probably sound like they're more at night. I don't know if those other buildings are even open at night, or how many people, because those are some pretty big parking lots.
I believe the applicant did know, explore those options with adjacent property owners, but.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we actually, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead. You go ahead, and then we'll go to Charlie.
I was just going to address that. So, we actually do have a written memorandum of understanding with Vic Alexander, who's the owner at the country store. Because just, like you said, realistically, when people pull in there, enters event, they're probably, there's probably going to be a chance of some people just parking right across the street there, right? So, we have a memorandum of understanding with Vic that that can happen, and if, we'll coordinate with him when those events are. And if he has any issues with that, he would coordinate directly with us before, you know, call him the Planning Commission and authorities like that, so.
Jason, are they allowed to do that in the county as well, if he has a memorandum of understanding that actually has a signed contract?
Yeah, we looked at that option, too, and I don't believe that he could fit the required amount of spaces.
Even with his and theirs?
Correct.
Okay.
If I can just speak to legal side of it. Megan Creer with the State's Attorney's Office. A memorandum of understanding is great, but it can be taken away at any time. An easement is very different. That's something that stays on the property for forever, so.
Megan, I'll just tell you from the city, I never got an easement. I got from the church for my building, I got basically, they needed to know that if I had overflow, that I could use a church about a block away. So, I don't know how they work theirs out, but I think just somebody saying that you can use their parking, like you said, might not be legal, but in the city, that's how they accommodate people that, when you have huge parking lots, that they're not being used, instead of having so much impervious area that they can actually be used for something more than just, you know, 10 people at a country store, so.
Yeah, and I totally understand your point of view, Haddock, but the issue is, is that those memorandums of understanding, even in your situation, can be taken away. So, it's not parking for forever. So, if a future owner of that lot decided that they didn't want to allow event center parking in their parking lot anymore, then there wouldn't be enough parking in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Mostly for Jason. I'm thinking of, what is it, Candyland there? We're looking at the building on the very bottom of the screen.
Correct.
What ratio are we using for that parking lot? I mean, is that all theirs? Did we require that parking lot per Candyland?
I didn't review the parking ratio for that structure.
I guess I'd like to know that. And then, secondly, if you look at the next one up, during the rally and other times of year, that ends up like a tent city, where we don't have control of any of the parking, do we?
No. I don't believe so.
So, that hasn't been used for anything but tents and retail sales come and go. Plus, any property owner has, what would I say, only limited control of where people park. You try to give them an open space, but I guarantee you they're going to park closer if it's capable of parking closer. There's, unless we have, you know, people out there directing it. So, I can understand where this, the additional parking space... So I can understand where this, the additional parking spaces are of concern. But it concerns me, look at the size of that lot at Candyland. I'd sure like to know what we were doing, whether we required that. That, how many, there's got to be more than 100 spaces right there. So I, I, I don't know. And then that's another possibility. It, it actually is kitty-corner from his property. And if Mr. Alexander's involved in that, he may be able to direct them or give them the written access. Let's say if that's the form we wanted in that, that we can do, so. I guess it doesn't concern me as much out there because we're not totally in control of the parking in the first place. It would appear. It certainly, when he talks five-to-one versus three-to-one is what I'm saying. We're not necessarily in control of those sort of selections. Other than right here.
I can get you that information for Candyland. As far as the tents go on the other properties, is that something that we have on our list of things to remedy this summer? Because we've never seen a temporary building permit on that site. So that's definitely something that we will be watching this year.
I, I can understand what you're saying. It's just sometimes when you live out there, what you see in actuality is somewhat different than what comes across this venue. Thank you, Jason.
Further questions? Did you have other items on your list?
Yeah, you know, I, that was one of the, the concerns that Alicia and I had was that, you know, there is a lot of parking out there. We would like to utilize what's out there versus, you know, just add another parking lot, right? Because then you have the stormwater like you're concerned, Commissioner Marsh. And, you know, that's our concern, too, right? We don't, we don't just want to have a whole bunch of parking lots that sit empty most of the time, too. So that's what we're looking to do.
Put some tents here.
You know, that, what, that was one thing with Vic's that is we would work. I mean, that's, that's really what he said. He says, you could use that the whole year round, you know, just, you got to work with me during this tent. And we said, hey, we could definitely do that, right? Because we may want to have some type of event there that ties into the rally a little bit more. And it's, it's going to kind of just be working together out there to make sure people are parking safely and in a, in the right spot.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Question for the applicant. And I'm not trying to back you against the wall, but the truth is that that lot could be sold out from underneath you even if you had the access, wouldn't it? The access is going to be limited to future sale.
At the, the country store, you're saying?
Yeah, you'd have to actually own the whole lot to hang on to it the way our legal department is asking you.
That's what I'm understanding, yeah.
Okay.
They said.
That's what I was trying to.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
But the other thing is, is that this venue is going to bring them lots of business. So I don't think they're going to be opposed because they could be shopping at Candyland and walk up to the event center. So a lot of people, just so you give them some business a little bit. But I don't think that's going to be a little bit of business. I think he just opened them up to some good cash flow, how about that for their businesses, so. Whether it's sold or not, if you're helping my business, a lot of times people aren't going to.
Where I was coming from, Deb, is if we get him to sign the access, the access is going to save based upon future sale. And when it gets sold, then he's short of parking again.
But that's why I said.
That's where I was headed with that comment.
And that's why I said, they, even if it was sold, I'm pretty sure, if it was from you to me, if he was bringing you business, I, most people are pretty cooperative with people that are.
Oh, I meant if somebody builds on it for that sale, then that kills him. Then he's got to hunt for one of these alternatives we're talking about right now or a different ratio, something. We, we've put him in another box to work his way out of. Thank you.
Further questions?
The other thing I think about just looking at this, and I know how people are watching the shopping centers and everything else, that's a long way from Lot 6 over there. It really is compared to Candyland or one of the others. That's, you know, people are basically lazy a lot of times. And they, they just, that's a long haul. Who knows what the weather's going to be when the event is done? Is it going to be raining? How they're going to get over there? That would be my concern.
Okay. Did you have further items, sir?
Yeah, I think just one more on here. Number 12, it says that the hours of operation for the event center shall be between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. And that quiet hours be from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. I just kind of had a question for, how was the 11:00 p.m. determined? And then what is, what do quiet hours mean? And I can preface that by saying, you know, our, the event center will have outdoor activities, too. But it's fully our intention to have all that brought inside, doors closed, any type of outdoor, you know, what if, let's say someone had a, you know, just hanging out out there, right? On a nice day, whether it's yard games or, or an Easter egg hunt or something like that, right? That would all be brought in earlier in the evening. But we would hope that we would be able to stay open past 11:00 p.m. for inside-only activities. For example, if we, if there was a New Year's Eve celebration or something like that, right?
So the quiet hours that I used for my conditional approval was taken straight from the proposal with the application. And I actually gave them an extra hour because they said 10:00 p.m. So I went to 11:00 p.m. If you, if planning commission would like to extend that, I wouldn't oppose it.
All right, go ahead.
So the main thing is, is if you have an outdoor event and you're having maybe music or something outside, too, that there's neighbors. So the main thing is if you're inside and it's quiet, that's a little bit different than you're outside. But, so we would have to change those hours or put on condition of, you know, if you're in the building, it's this, if you're outside the building, it's 9:00 to 11:00.
Right, so those aren't hours of operation, those are just quiet hours. So if you're inside your building and at 11:00 p.m., then you're fine.
Yeah, so basically you could have your venue, but it has to be, you know, if it's outdoors, after 11:00, the bands and everything have to be shut down by then, not inside, but outside, right, Jason?
Yeah, right, yeah. It's as to not become a nuisance to neighboring properties after 11 o'clock.
Well, then this needs to be rewritten. It says the hours of operation for the event center, in my mind, are determined by the applicant. And so I, I would just say that quiet hours being from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Is that, and we, because do we care what time they open up and what time they close?
No.
So then can we strike the first part of the sentence and 9:00 a.m. to 9:00? Just say, instead of that, say, or excuse me, delete all the way to the word "that" and just say quiet hours are from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Does that meet the county's intent?
Yes.
Okay.
Required hours will be from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m., Rich?
Yes.
Okay, on number 12.
Okay, keep going.
And then one other last thing, I just want to comment is that we really took a lot of effort in orientating that building. And if, leave me mind, you can hold up the floor plan if you don't mind. But really, the, the side where people will be outside is really focused towards the creek, right? To try and keep that noise away from that subdivision. And, you know, we've got insulated walls and everything on that other side. But, yeah, it's this side here, which is the, again, side towards the creek. So we, we really want to make sure that we're not a, definitely not a nuisance for the neighbors and that we are, people can get their rest and sleep and enjoy their residence.
They'll tell you if you're a nuisance.
Okay.
Real quick.
Further comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? In the audience. Noting none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-08 with 19 conditions. I would note the changes in item 12 with respect to the deletion of the, the first part. And just, so number 12 is rewritten to say quiet hours are from, are from or will be from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. I, at this point, for the, the conditional use permit, I, I don't think that there's a consensus from the board or, or any, everybody. From my perspective of listening to this is that we, you know, at this point, additional parking lot is likely required because he can't, we're not in, he's not in control of the additional parking spaces that are adjacent to his property. So that's still a variance in an item in my mind that has to be worked through, through the committee process.
Right, and the hearing for that is April 5th.
Yeah.
And Rich, he does have 100 on there. He's got that number 67 on the top and 36. But then if he needs a variance or something else, he'll have to work, like Jason said, through the next step.
Maybe this question is for Megan. If, so memorandum of understanding is, is one thing. But if the landowner, if he was able to secure a parking easement that would be filed and, and run with the property, is that, would, would that suffice compared to a memo?
Yes, that would be very different to me because then that is clearly legal ask, access that they would have in perpetuity, essentially.
Okay, so that's maybe an option the applicant could go through. I agree with, with, with Mike's comment that, that people are going to park close. So we can, we can say this and make them do this and, and follow all the rules. And the closest parking spot is going to be the one, going to be the winner. So, okay. I don't have any further questions, go ahead.
Just roughly counting from the picture in the, in our agenda, it looks like there's over 100 parking places for Candyland. So maybe they'd be willing to do an easement, maybe for the last row or something. Just saying, because you never see 100 cars at Candyland.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'm doing the same thing. I'm uncomfortable actually leaving that in there. I, I guess I'd like the applicant to come up again. And the reason being, I'd like to know whether they would like me to go along with the staff's recommendation or do you want this cleared up before you get your set of rules you got to live by? What would you prefer?
I see two options. We can move forward with this, and then these are the conditions that you would have to go by or, or come back and, and they would get amended. Or we could continue this for two weeks. You could maybe work some of the other things that were discussed here today and see if you could get, make any headway with those. I don't know. It's certainly up to you.
Okay, so the, so is the, is the five-to-one ratio option not available?
No.
Mr. Chair, yeah. Until Jason answers what the different things to review, I guess I would think that it isn't available, is that correct?
It's not, no.
Right.
So Chairman, it's a three-to-one ratio, but what we're asking is maybe you could get an easement or some kind of more dedicated parking spots that would be legal from across the street. So you wouldn't have, if they had like 30, that would reduce you down 30 and then you'd have that five or that three-to-one ratio. So we're, we're saying you could find some solutions, maybe with some of the parking across the street. But it has to be something that would be more permanent in case they sold the property. Okay? Am I correct?
Or we can move forward today with the current conditions that, that are in here. But we would be following staff's recommendation of the three-to-one.
Gotcha.
Chairman. So Jason, could he come back? We could approve it today with him coming back to you guys before the building permit and showing that he could get the three-to-one from across the street without having to continue this? Because otherwise, sir, you'd have to follow the three-to-one ratio, if I'm correct. But does it have to be a planning commission approval? Or can it be through you and Brittany saying, okay, you've changed this. It's a three-to-one ratio with that easement that's legal across the street.
I think if they're going to change what they're proposing, they'd have to come back to amend their conditional use permit.
Okay. Sorry, Rich, I didn't know if they could do that.
Nope. Good question.
And I don't know what all of the conditions are. But one way that you could do it is you could just say that the parking has to be three-to-one. And then they have to show at the building permit phase that they met that somehow, however it is.
That's good, Megan. Is that okay with you, Jason? Okay. Is it okay with the planning commissioners?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to see if there's already something that's written in regards to that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
If we just took Candyland, what concerns me is if we were doing racial there based on something that they have in their building permit and their conditional use permit, they may not be able to offer them the use of additional parking spaces. I'm saying that's really becomes key. Or the other lot that we're going to look in, it, it sounds like those aren't going to be viable anyway.
Well, it comes back like three-to-one. He either has to do it, like Jason said, with the 67 and the 36.
I understand.
Or he has to come back. And if that doesn't work, Charlie, then he can't use it. So it doesn't, he, either way, he has to do the three-to-one if we change it to that.
Correct, but what I'm getting at is he won't have additional spaces from them. If we, if, if Candyland needs all theirs to meet their conditional use permit, we've left him no door to get out.
Well, he gets 67 on one and 36 on the other. He does have 100 parking spots. Did you see that?
That's why I asked him this question. Does he want to go on today or do we want to get this solved and come back again?
Okay, I'd say we'd move approval with the changes on number 12 would be my motion. And then on number eight, he needs a, I don't know how you say that, Jason, but basically he needs a three-to-one ratio for his parking spaces.
He must provide.
He must provide a three-to-one ratio for his parking.
Needs five-to-one.
Unless you have a different way to put that. So that would be my motion.
Do you own that six, number six?
Hold on, is there, is there a second to the motion? I'll second it for discussion. Go ahead with discussion.
Do you own Lot 6 outright?
No, we're in the process of purchasing that right now. We've got a purchase.
If you found something in Candyland, would you continue to purchase it?
Probably yes. And then maybe develop something in the future on that.
Well, the only reason I say that is if, for example, the others all bomb out, then at least you do have that as an option.
Yeah, we have a purchase agreement right now, so we're just on that.
Further discussion? Okay.
Just a question, then.
Go ahead.
Based on that, then you would probably prefer to go forward today, is that not correct?
Yes, if we, if we have the, the verbiage that you talked about, I would, I think we'd go forward today.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Can I clarify that the change on item eight is to change it to three-to-one ratio or leave it at five-to-one?
No, it's three-to-one now.
It's three-to-one now. And so instead of, instead of number eight being stating that a minimum of 67 parking spaces be provided onsite and 33 additional off-site parking spaces be provided on Lot 6 of the Forks at Remington Ranch subdivision, each measuring minimum of nine feet by 18 feet and maintained in a dust-free manner. It would be something along the lines of the applicant shall provide a minimum three-to-one parking ratio for the project. How do you want to state that?
Jason, do you have a recommendation on that's three-to-one and what we put with it?
Or what happens if you just put, we will, he will provide an additional 33 off-site parking lots?
That works, too. In my mind, if you open it up and just say the three-to-one ratio, it allows them to manage this a little bit more. Maybe they can get more out of their current design on, on, on the lot instead of specifying one versus the other. But it's the applicant's decision.
So I drafted that condition based on the proposal that was submitted to me. So I think if you leave it open, then that opens us up to not having something proposed during this meeting. So this would be the.
I was just going to say that a minimum of 100 parking spaces be provided. And period. And then wherever that is, that's where that is, and that'll be part of our building permit review.
Well, it still has to be provided with the, the caveat of the, the, the items that go along with that within a certain number of feet of the building, et cetera, right?
I agree.
In accordance with Section 310, because that's our section of our ordinance that.
Says three-to-one?
Okay.
I think that that covers it.
A minimum of 100 parking spots based on ordinance 310.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Are we then, the motion is basically we're going to go with the staff's recommendation with the modification to the.
Number 12.
Number 12, and then it would be number eight now.
And number eight would be rewritten to say that the parking, the parking spaces shall be, minimum 100 parking spaces be provided in accordance with Section 310.
Thank you.
So can I say one more thing, please?
Go ahead.
So when this was proposed to us, we came up with those specific conditions to include a sidewalk for pedestrian traffic. And it's the reason that he needs to go forward with a variance for that parking because it's more than 200 feet away. So if we take that away and that's no longer the proposal, then the variance goes away. And if he finds a parking spot that's 200 feet away in some other parking lot, then he's going to have to come forward with another variance again for that.
Okay.
So two variances, meaning, does he have to pay? Do you pay variance once or you pay variance twice?
So what's proposed in his plan for lot six to be a parking lot is kind of fed into other proposals to the board for that variance for the two hundred feet. Because when we explored different parking options, that was the one that he proposed. So we gave him guidance for the variance for the two hundred feet. If he goes, if we allow him to just find a hundred spots randomly and it creates another issue on another parking lot, he'll have to come forward with another variance and submit another one.
Is that part of the building permit process? No?
No, it's part of the conditional use permit process.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Charlie.
Jason. The properties at Remington, that's a P U D?
Our highway service district.
Is it? Aren't they already required to have sidewalk?
Required to have what?
Sidewalk, the way it is in there. In other words, the sidewalk could be just like it is in town. It's part of the right of way. But it may be over utilities, it may be over other things. In other words, they could.
I don't think there are any sidewalks.
All I was getting at is the, the property owner or Vic, whoever could provide some sidewalks if they wanted to. Wouldn't they meet this gentleman's difficulty?
Right, the issue comes up if it's more than two hundred feet away.
Right.
So what's submitted now, the applicant has already submitted an application for a variance request to allow parking two hundred feet away from the venue. So if that goes away, then where are the other spots coming from? Are they going to be evaluated? Are they more than two hundred feet away?
You still have second time.
I think I agree with you. I just point out though, that if the property, the other property owners wanted to provide the sidewalks and basically, and it's more than two hundred feet away, they've, they'd still probably would have to have the variance. But then we don't have that particular problem with the sidewalks. It's going to be put in the right place. The other property owners have it there or whoever's in charge. Vic is, still owns a lot of that property, I think, well, along with the other owners, don't they?
So Chairman, there's a number nine, the prior to the operation easement be recorded with register of deeds in a pathway or sidewalk be construction instructed on seven hour for patrons usually utilizing off-street parking spaces located in lot six. But if he didn't need to use lot six anymore, Jason, then it would have it across the street, right? But he'd still have to do the side, the sidewalk in the other areas? Or not? Go ahead.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. I would just suggest that we just continue this so we can figure out what he can or cannot get and what conditions need to be added on in addition, in addition to depending on whatever he gets for additional parking. Because if he gets parking across the street, do we necessarily want people just crossing a busy road? And then from the other direction, if he has parking on the other side, there's going to need to be a sidewalk. So I would just suggest that we continue it so we can figure out which he's going to do.
Okay, thank you. You were gonna, I saw your hand come up several times.
I was just going to say, I mean, my option that I'm going to lean towards is, is working with Vic on those lots right across the road there.
Okay. Well.
And for what it's worth, I mean, it's, it's a pretty not used street except for the people going through that subdivision. So we could put some type of crosswalk in there with a sign and I.
So what we're, what we're up against is the, is that we have these recommendations that are, uh, and conditions that are provided by the, by the staff. And, and we, um, these are the things that the, that they have to go by after we vote today. So if, it sounds to me like there's some items here that are a little bit in flux and the, the cleaner path is for this to be continued for two weeks. You work through all of these things. It comes back to us in a finished package, or if you will. So there isn't these if this, then this, if this, then this type of scenario for, for this group. Your thoughts on that?
No, I think that's fair enough.
Okay.
Chairman, that way too, sir, you can see if you need to do variances or anything else and what that entails before you commit to something today where you have three, three or four variances. Sounds like you need to, um, that's, it's going to be cleaner for you as well. So you're telling everything you want to do and then working out parking sidewalks and other things with Jason.
Which is what was submitted today and that's what I based my staff report off of. You know, the applicant, we did work through these issues before. We explored different parking options. This is what he decided on moving forward and this was the plan. So if he wants to change it at this point, I guess we can continue it for two more weeks.
Okay.
That'd be my motion, just continue for two more weeks.
Okay.
So I'll take my.
I will second that. Hold on, hold on, just, just one second. When he gets done talking, we can, I'll, I'll bring you back up to make sure that we get this discussed through. Any further discussion from the board with, with the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate the time. I mean, I learned some things here, which is, I didn't know was available to us as options. So thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time.
All right, thank you. Sir, if you want to come up to the podium and state your name.
My name is, my name is Richard Jensen and I own property adjacent to the, the property, the ranch that is right across the creek. I think that just a general feeling is between the builder and, and the family, they, they didn't want to run into this situation to where they're running into another holdup with getting construction started. If Andy says so, if, if he decides that's what he wants to do, I mean, that's, that's where it'll probably be headed. But I would just like to maybe add the fact that if all we would need right now, I think Jason has things the way you need to go forward with asking for a variance that will have to go forward in the, in the next commissioner's meeting. As where the variance, if, if I'm right, that's where the variance is approved?
Correct.
Okay, so otherwise, everything else has been decided upon here, I do believe. If it's just the variance that, and the parking that is up there, that is a question, maybe I could help a little bit with a description of how this parking lot was going to be used. And from my daughter speaking with me, that probably this parking lot would be used for valet-type parking, especially if they have big events where they can see that the, the close parking lot is going to overflow. And then they could use this lot to, to the boys with the tennis shoes on are parking those cars up there and, and whatnot. So I think that there's a, I think they, what they have in mind is very, very straightforward a plan and that would, that would work. One word about Candyland, we have contacted Candyland. My wife has called Mr. Mueller, Mueller. And he, he is all for us parking over there. But he said, but as far as me giving you something in writing, he says, I'm not going to be able to do that. So, and that makes sense. I mean, if I was a businessman over there where he's at, I'd be in the same shoes. We want to get along with you, but on the same token, we don't want to give up any of our rights. So that's all I have and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I know time is of the essence on this, this project. What would happen if we went ahead and went on through just as planned, except for twelve with the hours? And then they would come back to the well if for some reason the lot six thing, they find something better, then they'd come back. At least at that point, they're moving on, on the six, would something like that work?
Right, it would have to be reviewed again.
Yeah, right.
The conditional use permit would need to be reviewed again.
But at least.
Same situation, if the variance gets denied, they would have to come back with an alternate proposal.
Right. Well, I was just thinking that way, at least they could move on as is. And then if, if there's a change down the road, they can come back to the well on that thing.
So you have the applicant, Rich?
What's that?
Let's.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I just sent my wife a quit note and, and we'd like to proceed with everything as is since we have the variance already going through the works. And that's on the hearing for the, uh, commissioners, I think, next week. And then, like you suggested, if we do find an alternate one, we'll come back and, and revise that. But we'll go the path we've set forward right now.
So Chairman, both those motions, the first and the second are void then?
That's correct.
Do we have to vote on each one of those and then go back?
The current motion on, on the, on the floor is to continue this for two weeks unless you want to pull your motion.
I'll pull it.
Okay, so now we are, um, the motion is pulled. It sounds like the only change then moving forward would be on item twelve with respect to the change on the quiet hours. The rest of these items stand as written by staff.
So we had a motion on number twelve and then the three to one. So we have to take that back too, because me and you first and seconded that.
No, we were, we were amending the conditions, but the motion was to, the last motion was to continue this. So if you've withdrawn that, now we're, we're back to square one. He, he just asked for that all of these go at, move forward as, as normal with the exception of the quiet hours, correct? That was, that was the fix. So items one through nineteen are, are as is with the exception of twelve. That would be where, where it's currently at. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Second.
Except twelve, yes.
For approval.
For approval, yes.
Second for approval. All right.
Mr. Chair, just for discussion, the, the applicant would still have the option of discussing the three to one versus five to one when he gets his building permit through our department. I mean, he may not prevail, but he still has that option if we pass what's.
Or he can come back and amend this.
Correct.
With the variance.
I'm saying he, he could solve it perhaps himself before he gets there. If Jason finds out other areas fit in better. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think it's a better deal if we pass this as it is right now.
Okay, further discussion?
Could we get Jerry to read back that original motion? Because that's what we would be voting on, correct?
Right, it's for approval with just amending condition number twelve.
Just number twelve.
Yep.
We didn't mention number eight in that first motion. Okay.
Further discussion? Everyone clear on the motion? Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Item nine.
Agenda item number nine is planned unit development overlay twenty-two dash zero five to allow planned unit development overlay for a recreational resort to include RV spots, a wedding venue, bed and breakfast and outdoor recreational activities. The applicant is Angela Lidle of River Country Limited Partnership.
We'll call, we'll call you up as, as after Jason's done. I keep you from standing so long. Thanks.
I need exercise.
She is beside me if you have any questions for her moving forward. Site location is twenty-two eight zero one Jensen Road. That is north and east of Wall, South Dakota, or Washtis, South Dakota, I should say. Currently zoned agriculture district, existing land use is residential and agriculture. Access is off of Jensen Road and there is no special, or there is special flood hazard area on the subject property. Zoning ordinance lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a planned year development overlay district. They're on the screen. I'll read staff's responses beginning with number one. The uses of the proposed P U D overlay district conform to the uses by right of or conditional uses permitted in an agriculture zoning district. Number two, the uses of the proposed planned year development overlay are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed planned year development overlay district meet Pennington County zoning ordinance three-twenty-three and three oh six, which govern bed and breakfast and recreational vehicle parks. Number four, the proposed P U D overlay district is over twenty-eight hundred acres. Number five, the proposed P U D overlay district is owned by River Country LLC or Limited Partnership. The business is listed as a limited partnership and is in good standing with the South Dakota Secretary of State. Number six, given the remote locations of the RV parking spots, each RV parking spot will be marked with a unique spot number clearly visible from the driveway. The uses of the proposed P U D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. And number six, or number seven references to the next table on the screen, which is the seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. Again, I'll read staff's responses beginning with number one. The uses of the proposed P U D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agriculture zone, zoning district. Number two, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, given the remoteness of the proposed P U D overlay, the uses should not impede the normal orderly development or an improvement of surrounding properties for the permitted uses permitted in the district. Number four, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district meet Pennington County zoning ordinances section three-twenty-three and three oh six, which govern bed and breakfast and recreational vehicle parks. Number five, Jensen Road utilizes existing on and off ramps to access Interstate ninety. Number six, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district appear to meet Pennington County zoning ordinance section two sixteen. Property history, there are eleven tax IDs involved in this P U D. The one with the home stand on it does contain a twenty-six by thirty-six equipment building, a fourteen by twenty farm utility building, forty-one by forty-nine in Quonset building, ten by twenty tool shed. A building permit is required for that shed and that is included as a condition of approval. It also, that's, that property also has a single-family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system. The remainder of the tax IDs involved in this P U D overlay are vacant of any structures or utilities. Request was routed for enter departmental review. County Highway stated that if average daily traffic count exceeds two hundred and fifty, then the road must be improved to payment in accordance with ordinance fourteen for the section of Jensen Road from I ninety-two, highway fourteen sixteen. And this is addressed as a condition of approval. Emergency services also stated that the applicants need to ensure they have their assigned house number posted properly in accordance with ordinance number twenty. And that if RV spots are approved, they would likely need a second address for the business with lot numbers posted on each RV parking spot. Again, these are addressed as conditions of approval. County environmental planner stated that the applicants need to obtain approval from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture Natural Resources for the proposed bed and breakfast and provide the letter to the planning department, which the applicant has done. Environmental planner also stated that Pennington County ordinance section three oh six requires that a wastewater or that a water carriage wastewater disposal system be approved by the Pennington County Planning Department. And the applicant has stated that there will be either portlets or composting toilets near each of the RV sites. I know it says incinerator toilet in your staff package, but the applicant did say composting toilets. Those are considered experimental systems by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Re, Agriculture and Natural Resources, and they will require approval prior to use. Staff's analysis of the request. The applicant is proposing to utilize the subject properties for self-contained recreational vehicle parking. The sites will not have any electricity, water or wastewater treatment services provided, save the composting toilets. Again, that is a, that's the requirement of section three oh six of the Pennington County zoning ordinance and South Dakota Department of Agriculture Natural Resources. Approval will be required and those are captured as conditions of approval. The applicant is also proposing to utilize the existing single-family residence as a bed and breakfast. And the applicant has provided a state-approved letter for the onsite wastewater treatment system. Department of Equalization does state that the single-family residence is classified as owner occupied. They have provided a safety plan for the bed and breakfast and staff conducted a site visit and verified adequate parking will be provided for the uses requested. And lastly, the applicant is proposing to utilize a portion of the property as a wedding venue and outdoor recre, and recre, outdoor recreational activities, sorry. The applicant has clarified this request via email and only plans to allow outdoor weddings with no reception, building or permanent structures on the property. With that, given the size and acreage of the property, staff doesn't have any concerns with parking. With that all said, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval of planned year development overlay twenty-two dash zero five with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes.
I have a question about condition number twenty-six.
Go ahead.
That the road will be improved to, to meet county standards by whom is, was my question? Is it by the county? Because Jensen Road would be a county road, correct?
Right, I believe Highway's intent was that the applicant would improve that if average daily traffic count exceeds two hundred and fifty. I don't believe that will be the case, given the limited amount of sites that the applicant has out there. But if Highway does have concerns, I believe that.
Okay, I just, it wasn't specified anywhere, so I thought, good question. Who's gonna, who's gonna pay for that update?
If I may.
Hold on just a second. We're gonna. Hold on just a second. We're gonna go through questions with staff first and then we, and then we go to the applicant. Go ahead, Michael.
Uh, should that be made clear? As far as who, who pays for this?
I think it says on there, doesn't it? Does it say?
No.
Mm-mm.
No, uh-uh. That was one of my questions too.
Good question.
I can clarify with County Highway.
Okay. I would think, you know, who knows in the future?
Sure.
Mister Chair, well, I think, go ahead. I heard you down there too.
We're firing on all cylinders this morning.
When you have a bed and breakfast, don't you have to have a separate entrance, separate bathroom, that kind of thing legally? And then is it egress windows? I mean, does everything have to be the code? Cause I know, um, for other places, I mean, you gotta be able to get out the windows and, do you have egress windows?
She submitted a uh, application to Department of Health. She's pending an inspection by them, and they would come through at that time and verify egress windows and.
Okay, so they, they do all that and that they have separate, okay. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. They do, okay.
Charlie.
Thank you. Jason, I guess, let's go by the picture up there. That's the easiest way to work my question. I'm concerned about the service road of all the locations and we're dealing with center pivots that it appears to operate. Is that, is that correct? And emergency services, you're gonna have to have quite a service road to be able to get an ambulance or any vehicles, emergency vehicles in and out of there.
So I did do a site visit and that was a question I asked with that center pivot going across the section line in Jensen Road. And the applicant does have uh, an approved road that goes around. So in case that center pivot isn't going across Jensen Road, there are alternate accesses to go around.
To every one of those, let's say, outlying structures?
There's only two or three.
I noticed you, you referenced the addresses and whatnot. I don't have any problem with that. I'm just saying, that, that's difficult for emergency people to, to negotiate in these vehicles. Again, I bring up are getting bigger and bigger all the time. Even the ambulances are getting more equipment on them. They're heavier. Just a thought. It's, that's quite a challenge.
Further, further questions for staff?
Chairman. I would, I would also suggest you put at least one porta potty there, cause I have a feeling you're just gonna have people having, going to bathroom everywhere. I mean, from experiencing people, for your benefit, I think, um, it would be a good thing for you to put at least one or two porta potties out there, since you're not gonna have hookups. So.
Further questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Michael.
Is it normal to have a, a PUD over two thousand acres? I mean, so there's a lot of tax IDs here. Wouldn't you narrow that down or does that not matter?
She's requesting the use of the entire property, all those eleven tax IDs for outdoor usage, basically for hiking, stargazing.
So it would have to be the, that, okay, alright, that, that answered it.
Further questions for staff? Alright, Mrs. Lidle, please proceed.
Okay, I'm Angela Lidle from Lidle's Red Angus Ranch and the River Country Enterprises LLP. And just wanna thank you all for the job you're doing here. It's amazing being up here. This is my first time coming in here, so I didn't know what all you have to do, but you guys have to be on the ball. So anyways, what I'm proposing is I joined the South Dakota Agritourism School as trying to find a way to make more income off of our ranch, because two of our sons wanna come home and be ranchers also, and it's just not gonna support everybody just with ranching. So through the school, I came across this mooch docking, which is RVers that wanna come and park out in the middle of nowhere. They don't want all the hookups and facilities. They just wanna get away from the crowds.
What'd you call it?
Mooch dockers?
Mooch doctors?
Some people call it boondockers. There's hip campers.
Mooch docking.
Yeah.
Docking, not mooch docking.
No doctors.
Yeah, not doctors.
Just the word mooch is funny.
So anyways, that got me thinking that we've got a lot of just little flat areas throughout the ranch where if somebody wanted to park an RV, they could park it, you know, for the night, whatever. They could feel free to go walk through the trees or down by the river and just do some hiking, enjoy nature. And they've said that astrotourism is getting to be a big thing where people are wanting to get out away from the light pollution to look at the stars. And there's only eight places left in the whole United States that are, reach the highest ranking for doing stargazing. And one of them is up at Slim Boots, South Dakota, and the Badlands ranks at twenty-one point seven to twenty-one point nine, and a twenty-two is the highest rating for no light pollution. So I feel like I would be probably fairly close to that, being out in the middle of nowhere. So that's one of the things I wanna be able to offer with this. So with the RV campers coming in, the website that I'm right now leaning towards using hip campers and they are kinda like Airbnb. You get on there, look through, you can see what's offered, what isn't offered, what you can and can't do. And then you contact them and they do the reservations and get ahold of me and then I show them where to park, whatever, when they come in. So that's kinda how we've gotten started in this. Uh, I plan to offer like nature hikes, bird watching, listen to the wildlife experiences. Coyotes will howl almost every night down there. If they want to come and talk to me about the ranch and I can give them a little ranch tour, like if it's in May, April and May, which is our calving time, I could take them out on little tours to see calves being born, whatever. And then there's also close to the river, so they can do fishing. They can go inter tubing on it. You know, that's their own plan there. And then as far as talking about the wedding venue, I'm really not planning to do a wedding venue, but when I was talking to Jason and the other guys about setting this up and what I would have to do, they suggested that I do this a one-time overlay of everything and cover everything and anything that I thought I would possibly ever offer. So I thought, you know, if future generations wanted to wedding venue, then this has already been covered and we didn't have to come back. So that's why wedding venue's on there, but I'm really not planning it myself. So then the hip campers take the reservations. People already know before they come, there's no amenities offered. They're just gonna be out there on their own. And that's why part of the thing is Jason said that you guys probably wouldn't accept it without having toilets available. And myself, it's like, I don't know why anybody would want to go use a porta potty or another toilet when they have theirs in their camper. So I would prefer to be able to do it without having to offer that, but if I have to, I will look into it. And so far I've found one composting thing for composting toilet where you put in the peat moss, coconut, whatever, holes and it grinds it all together, whatever, and then it just turns into black soil you can use for fertilizing, whatever. So that's kinda what I'm looking at so far, but if you need me to continue on it, I will come back with something more definite after I've researched it more.
Thank you, God.
Yeah. So then also, let's see what I've got on here. Oh, you were talking about the road. Just so you know, Jensen Road is county, but we have a township that from our mailbox in is responsible for the road there. So that would be that part. Over where lot three and four, or where it says lot three, or three and four and number thirty-five there. That area has a gravel and sand. Most all that areas, it was an old sand pit and gravel mining place. So that road is all gravel going in, but we do have a road grader that we can put on our tractor to maintain that part if it ever needs to be maintained. The other part of Shine Township's road, Shine Township does have a road grader and the members of the township are the ones that are responsible for keeping that up, great, the graded good and all that. Um, there are alternate routes around each of the pivots that we have put in. They use it, the bur hay trucks go over them, the cattle trucks, our tractors. We drive them with our vehicles. So they are usable for the ambulances and fire trucks to get in there.
You're pretty fishing at a lot of things. It sounds like Miss Jensen.
Yeah, you know, it's just, well, you can't have, like you said, you can't have people trying to drive under your pivot when they're running. So roads have been made around those. Uh.
Nice.
I don't plan to allow any fires or outside flames at all. It's like if you smoke, you're gonna smoke inside your RV because it is so dry. I don't wanna ever take a chance of losing our winter forage there. And which brings to another point, I want the land to remain as ag land, and that's why I thought just not offering any of the amenities. It's still ag. When they're gone in the fall, our cattle graze these areas in the wintertime. Summertime, we have to haul the cattle out to pasture, so they're not there to cause problems with the campers, but just so you know, that's why I don't wanna have to change anything with the land because it's always gonna be for ag.
Do you believe all these people are gonna follow your rules?
I think most of them, one of the saving spots is like with the hip campers and the mooch dockers where they're booking through. They have a place where you can write reviews on how the campers treated your place. Hip campers, part of their philosophy is that they will leave it better than it was when they came in. They are required to haul out their trash to, you know, keep everything looking good. And if they don't, then you get to write a bad review and then other people say, ah, they're not staying at my place, you know. So that's a way of trying to control the sewage. You know, nobody's gonna be dumping sewage out here because I don't have that. That's kind of our little clip to keep them from.
And you guys have good insurance for liability on.
I will be getting.
Swimming and all that other stuff.
We have a policy with the River Country Enterprises. I plan to get one with a home ranch LLP, which will lease the ground. And so that gives me another tier, plus like the website that they, reservations through. If I go with hip campers or mooch docks, whatever, they also have their own million dollar liability policy.
Nice.
And then this, this year, the legislature also put in that ag tourism rule about liability coverage to that. You're kinda covered and they can't just sue you to sue you because this is an ag tourism experience and that's what they were wanting to get, whether they got hurt or not. So, thank you. Yeah, uh, right now I'm thinking, you know, if I get eight to ten campers a day, that's gonna be more than enough for me. So I don't think as far as having that two hundred people traveling down the road per day to cause us to have to update that, I don't see that happening. Our local fire department is in Wasta. It's volunteer. And then the ambulance and sheriff would come out of Wall and I would provide the campers with a sheet with their rules and with the emergency contact numbers, so they know where to get help and what address and all that is on there. What was the other thing? Oh, somebody told me there is a difference between bed and breakfast and Airbnb. Is that true? And what are the differences in, I mean, maybe I should be calling mine an Airbnb instead of a bed and breakfast. I just didn't know.
What you have is a bed and breakfast. Airbnb is if you're renting your entire house.
The whole house, okay.
Airbnb is what's considered vacation home rental in the county, and you would have a bed and breakfast because you're living in the house.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Uh, speaking of the bed and breakfast part, I have three extra bedrooms downstairs since my sons have since moved out. One of them still lives down there. So I have the bathroom shower down there. I've showed him where the fire extinguishers are at each end of the hallways. It's kind of two bedrooms on each end and then a big living area in the middle with a lockout door to the backside of the house. The windows all go right out. And there's a little drop of about six inches onto a rock ledge then that they can get out. So it's not like you're crawling out and falling or anything. They can get right out to safety that way. Or if they have to, they can go up the stairs and then out either through the living room area or the porch area or upstairs of our house. Process of getting the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors put in, they're ordered right now. And so I think I've got four or five of them to put in downstairs before I consider that good to go.
Do you have anything else, Rich?
I don't have any.
Need to ask her?
I don't have an.
Okay.
Go ahead, Michael.
I have a question. Uh, in, in the, the written thing that you uh, put in here, you said would share, the three bedroom occupants will share the bathroom with your son.
Yes.
Is that a normal situation in a, a bed and breakfast?
Nothing about this request has been normal so far, so I would say that, I would say that if Department of Health is fine with it, then that would be fine.
Alright, and then the other thing would be what Charlie's talking about going around the pinwheels, uh, the roads. Is that just a gumbo road?
No, surprisingly, all of that is, a lot of it is sand.
Okay.
It is like right where my house, I grew up just north of Rapid, it was gumbo. You walked outside in the mud, you came back with a foot this big.
Yep.
I can walk clear to my barn, which is a quarter mile away and come back and maybe a few little grains of sand on my, sand on my shoes when I come back to the house. I mean, it's, that part's really good. If I get up in the breaks area, yes, then you're gonna have the gumbo, more silt type clay, but yeah.
RVers will be, it's not.
No, none of those spots should cause any of them problems. There was two of them, must be what's thirty-six, I think. It's got a two and a three over it. That one, if it rained, I would not have anybody up there because that would probably get a little bit muddy because it's so close to the breaks. And then also up there where twenty-five, I think it is, it's got a two and a three there. Well, twenty-five would be like supposedly the wedding venue. They said mark where your wedding venue is gonna be. Well, I put a mark for it. It's like I said, I'm not planning a wedding venue really. But the other, the two and three down in the corner, that area also would be possibly a little muddy if there was a chance of rain, so I wouldn't park anybody there. All the other ones, it's good sand and they shouldn't have any issues.
Okay, good, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Angela, I'd have to be fibbing to tell you that I'm comfortable with this sort of camping. When you say that, why would anybody use a facility that is, they already have in their camper? Well, that's a limited capacity in their camper.
Yes.
And I, we've already have a number of these where we've approved them for uh, family members within our county and made them put in septic systems to provide for those, along with those setups. We haven't said here, you gotta provide them electricity. I don't think we've even required them to have water, but we have required to have them an appropriate or a normal way of handling the waste disposal. And I'm concerned about that. Uh, another thing is this type of camping, why I'm concerned about it, perfect setup, anybody that wants to live off the grid, all they gotta do is follow this type of camping. And they could stay with you thirty days. We don't have any control over it. They could stay with you all year. We don't have any control. People that wanna live off the grid would want to use this sort of system. And emergency wise, when you say you're not gonna park anybody there if it rains, what if they're already there when it does rain?
It would be a situation, if I knew the rain was coming, I would come and move them down to one of the other spots.
That's a little iffy.
To let them know that.
That's a little iffy.
Right now, I don't think rain's gonna be a problem, but no, I understand what you're saying.
But when they come, they're gonna come hard.
Yes.
Otherwise, you wouldn't have those pivots there.
Yeah, uh, as far as limiting the amount of time that they come to stay, I can go through the reservation people and say, you know, one time overnight is.
I would rather see you have a dump station, Angela, so that then they can pull up and dump and then pull back in the shot.
What kind of issues come up with me trying to put in a dump station? What will that require of?
D N A R, right? They gotta go through. They would decide that, not us.
Okay.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
She was ag and she wasn't a rancher beforehand, I guess that would probably concern me more, but I'm pretty sure, um, for this and it's Wasta, that area. I always take everything by circumstance. Um, she's got a lot of open space out there. She's got a lot of ranch land. Um, I think, uh, for me, I think she's pretty responsible by what she's done already, what she's looked up through the reservations and everything else. And I don't think staff, they probably would've shut her down already if she didn't have all her stuff. And Jason's pretty thorough. So for me, um, I don't, at this point, if she ends up needing one, I think she's gonna put one in and she'll probably figure it out um, by herself, cause she's not gonna wanna trash that ag land very much with, when she figures out that she probably might need a porta potty and some other stuff.
Yep.
Um, I'm just listening to her and she sounds really responsible with some of her stuff. And not that we should be guessing that, but I'm, I'm looking at her license and everything else. Most people, they would already rented that place out and done a bunch of this stuff without even asking these questions. So for me, I'm, I'm comfortable, um, with what she's doing at this time. And then again, uh, we can always shut her down if Jason goes out there and uh, say in six months, we do a review if that's what we need to do. And then see if she needs a, a dumping, or dumping station. She needs a porta potty. So I'm more comfortable doing that with a checkup in six months than I am making her do all that stuff if she's not responsible.
We have a six-month review on this. I'll just note that. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, and we weren't together on living in tents with that, right? So I can understand where you're coming from.
Well, and I was told, Jason had told me that if I let people come out and just set up tents, that I would be required to have a shower and bath services for them. So that's why I thought, well, we'll just go the self-contained RVs, you know, until I find out what's going on, because it's like, you know, this is new to me also.
But if you should happen, you, you must have wells out there and you must use the water from those wells.
We have one well at the house and it waters.
Is it shallow? Do you know how deep it is?
I'm thinking it's considered a deep well, because it seems like we had.
The one for the house is a deep well.
Yeah, well, and it waters all of the livestock and all that also. And it's not the best drinking water anyway, so we already run it through a filter for ourselves. And that's part of the reason I won't offer them water, because they're gonna have to have some kind of filter in their vehicle, RV to filter the water in order to be able to drink it.
I will agree that a deep well is a safer well, but
Yeah.
They can still be cont. they can still be contaminated by people over time.
I can understand that. So I've never known how these sewage dump things work. I mean, is it like into a cistern and then you have to have somebody come pump it out? Or is it something that slowly filters out? How do they work?
It could be a septic as well. Yes, it could. It's not a cistern. It would be a pump type situation where you have a tank that's pumped. But I would think you're, you've probably got the space out there where you'd probably want to put a tank and a septic to have as a dump station.
So condition 29 does have six months on it.
Yes.
Okay. So a six month review rather than a year?
No.
It's ma'am, Ms. Jensen, it said it on number 29 that you would have a six month review. That also too, Jason could come out and say, okay, Ms. Jensen, you need to do this, this and this. Um, or you can call them and say that you're going to add to it. You're going to put the dumping station because you found after looking into the business that this is more beneficial if you do it that way because you want more stuff or whatever. So.
Okay.
Further questions for the applicant? Okay. The only thing that I gathered, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Sorry, I made you cut you off. Um, I just wanted to point out that condition number 11, uh, it does state incinerator toilet in there. I would, uh, request that we change that to experimental systems.
Oh, that's what, yeah, I was going to ask you, is it, are you willing to let me look into using the composting toilet? Or do I need to get a porta potty rentals?
So if we have that condition changed, uh, the way that I just requested, that would allow her to do either composting incinerator or porta potty. So whatever she decides on, it allows her that flexibility to use one of
What condition, Jason?
Condition number 11.
Number 11, right?
Yes.
And you want to change the word incinerator to experimental?
Systems, yes.
Experimental systems.
Has to be approved by the state.
By the ag and natural resources, yes.
So porta toilets don't need to be state approved, but the other experimental systems do.
The second thing I had was that it was mentioned that item number 26 needed to state, you know, by the applicant or or thereabouts. Is that correct? Even though the applicant doesn't ever see that that will be an issue if, if the traffic due to the business it does start to exceed 250, then, um, that, that road would need to be paved.
And by who?
And I'm, I'm saying, do you want the, by the applicant listed?
I would assume that it would be a township road, that they would be the ones, would they be the ones that you would go to first to have it paved? Cody, do you know?
So I think at this point, if we put by the applicant in there for now, and then at the six month review, I can clarify with the township and find out who would be responsible for that at that point.
And there again, he would be dealing with me.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have two conditions that were amended, uh, uh, number 11 and number 26.
Do we have a motion?
There is no motion.
So that'd be my motion with the two amendments.
For approval?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Motion and second. Further discussion? And to confirm, I don't think we have any more other questions for you, but is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item before we vote? Want to make sure. Noting none. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no.
No.
One, no. Motion carries. We're on item 10.
Well, Jason, I'd like to go out there and see, um, if I could miss Jensen with Jason one of these days to see what your operation does. So I think it'd be interesting to look what you're doing.
Give me a call and there'll probably be a lot more of this coming through the years where it's just getting to be a bigger thing that people don't want to stay in the traditional campgrounds.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, okay, thank you, everybody.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Cody Stack, environmental planner. Item 10 is layout plan LPL 22 dash 007. It is to subdivide and create lots one, two, three, and four of draw subdivision. The applicant landlord is Dale and Gillian C. Monzba. Uh, the location of the property is at 1333 Silver Mountain Road. Involves three properties. Uh, one's 19.02 acres, one's 4.39 acres, one's 2.5 acres. Uh, currently the existing land use is residential. Uh, there is a highway service district and high, um, agriculture district zoning. Uh, access is off Silver Mountain Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, currently on the property on tax ID, uh, 56, uh, 231, which would be the property that has the, uh, single family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system. It is 19.02 acres. And then both tax ID 68723 and 68724 are vacant of any structures. The applicant is proposing for lots, uh, for lot number one, it'll be 4.22 acres and will be vacant of any structures. A lot two will be 20.68 acres and will be vacant of any structures. A lot three will be 3.16 acres and it'll contain the single family residence and the onsite wastewater treatment system. And lot four will be 5.04 acres and vacant of any structures. This was rather around for a near departmental view. Uh, the highway department came back and said that if access to lot one is from Silver Mountain Road, then approach permit must be filed with the highway department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Uh, for the purposes of plating, a rezoning comprehensive plan amendment will be required as well as percolation and soil profile. All information will be required or subdivision regulation variance will be, need to be obtained to waive this requirement. Uh, access to the properties are through a 40 foot wide access and utility easement. Uh, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony, uh, with existing lots and current land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL 22 dash seven with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
And I just tried to re-add it and I know you know the answer to this, Cody. I came up with the, why, we've got a whole bunch of extra acres. When you total up the lots, one, two, three, and four versus breaking up one, two, and three, which is 19, then the 4.39, 2.5 is 25. Then I come up with about 33 acres totaling what we do have proposed. I don't know. I tried it twice last night and I thought maybe I was too late to be reading or the night before when I was reading.
I guess I'm not sure. I will, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, talk with the applicant and the applicant surveyor and see.
That, that was the only question I had. It just totals a lot more. It looks like somebody might be coming up later to tell us the answer to that. So
Yeah.
we'll finish with you first. We'll work you over, Cody, and send you to your chair. Thanks, bud.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for?
Going along with what Charlie said, the plat that you show here does not look anything like the overall on this.
Correct. That, this map is what's currently existing. This is a, this is an individual lot. This is a property and this is a property. There's three different properties that are involved that are all being combined.
Charlie, that may be where your extras coming in on that, that extra end.
Well, they had me fooled. The pictures all look the same. I'm just saying that one, I thought, and I sit the four lots, I flip back to that and it said one, two, three, and four. And then we get over here, one, two, three, and four, and I came up with 33.10.
I see what you're saying. 26 is listed in the staff report. You get over 30, adding the lot numbers.
I believe, I believe what the discrepancy is, is if you look at the plat number and it's hard to read on the screen, lot two, they had listed as 20 some acres, when in reality that is only 19. So I think there's just some
Yeah, 20.68, but that's still only one, one acre difference. And I've got, uh, my, my total comes up about eight acres difference if you told them.
Correct. And, and what, what I guess I mean by it is this, this big chunk that's right here is only 20, is only 19 acres currently as it sits.
Well, it's on one page is 19.2 and the other one at 20.68. So that's only one, by the way, I look at.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm
I think she's got the answer for us out there. So I don't know. I'm just saying that it doesn't equate.
Got it. Go ahead. Further questions for Cody?
Okay, Cody.
Yeah, just because I question it doesn't mean it's wrong. That's for sure.
All righty.
Okay. Um, we'll go to speakers. It sounds like we have, uh, yeah, if you want to please come up, I saw your hand. When you get to the lecture, if you'd state your name.
I'm Jill. Jill Yan, that's what it says, but you can call me Jill.
You had your, you had your hand raised with regards to the acreage. Does
Yeah, I, I, it's, I guess what I have too is that and then the, what he was putting up there, the other one, I guess. So I don't, just that the back lot is five acres to break off. And then our home is 3.1.
Six.
Our home and what our home is on now and that three acres, yep.
All right, Cody.
I, I really think it's just a typo from
Okay.
the surveyor on the, on the plat.
Okay, I do.
And we'll just, I'll confirm that with, uh, the surveyor, um, because we email them these conditions anyways. And we'll just have them update and make sure that those
So
Averages are correct.
My, my only, well, this is the layout plan. So I guess, um, it is the first step in this review process. Um, just so we have a point of clarity moving forward, the plat, this, this colored piece of paper is what is being proposed for us to review, just so we're not looking at the typewritten text and that this is what, this is what's being asked for.
Uh, correct. And there was just some, there's some, was additional lines in there that created some confusion. So I just highlighted the individual lots. That's how you, you received a color copy.
All right.
Um, we can work with the surveyor on getting a little better
No, I think that that
quality for the
That clarifies it for me. Further questions? Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. With that, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 22 dash 007 with 10 conditions, noting that the, the acreages will be resolved when it comes forth on the minor plat or however it's going to come forward.
Correct. And we'll get, um, adjusted for when it goes in front of the board next week too.
Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Item 11 is ordinance amendment OA 22 dash 01. It's the Pennington County, it's stat section 321 of the Hard Rock Mining, uh, to Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, staff is recommending to continue OA 22 dash 01 to the April 25th, uh, 2022 planning commission meeting. Uh, staff needs additional time to make additional changes and to do a thorough review based on state and federal regulations. Uh, so we have met with, uh, um, I forget his name. Uh, he's a professor over at School of Mines and Technology. We met with him. He gave us, um, um, information to either add or take away from the ordinance on what he felt was that the uh, county could regulate based off of his experience as a professor and being in the industry. Uh, so we just need some additional, uh, time to make those changes, uh, so we're not putting ordinance in front of you and then having to change it again right afterwards. So that's why staff
Move to April 25th.
We have two speaker request forms, um, for this item. So I would, I, I would respectfully ask that uh, they be allowed to speak on this item, even though I agree with you that this is going to, um, it, the staff's recommendation is to continue this and we don't actually have the revised version in front of us. But, um, I'd like to hear what these folks have to say, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
Um, the first speaker request form I have is from, uh, is it Carol, uh, Hazy, Hayes?
All right, I'll be very brief.
Well, and I, 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 I stated at the beginning of the meeting to try to avoid this scenario from happening. But, um, I stated at the beginning of the meeting that this is likely to be continued. And if people were here for this, that, yeah, um,
Thank you for that.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to waste time. So I'm
Yeah.
I do, that's why if you guys sat through the whole meeting and you still want to speak on this item, just know that, that we don't actually have the revised draft in front of us and we'll be continuing this April meeting.
Understood. And thank you so much. But you're thoughtful people. So, um, I know that you'll, you'll think about our remarks, um, and uh, run those by the professor and, and, um, your staff. Just real quickly, um, uh, Rick Bell, who's an engineer, has some very, uh, engineering point of view remarks on this that I hope you will listen very carefully. I'm just going to say one thing. Um, there are many things to say, but the one that I'd like to address is acid mine rain, uh, uh, acid mine drainage. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but any mining situation in the Black Hills, acid mine draining, uh, acid mine drainage is probable. And I'm actually from Lawrence County where we have the Gilt Edge Mine, which I've toured. It has cost more than $20 million now to address the acid mine drainage in the Gil, in the Gilt Edge Mine, which was an ex, an abandoned mine. It's cost $20 million to build one pit of sulfuric acid from this not terribly large mine. And I, I just want to emphasize how dangerous and how probable acid mine drainage is. And, um, uh, encourage you to look at the section of this very carefully. Um, there's no provision in the drafts that I've read so far for your, your pile of waste rock uh, not to generate acid mine drainage. So you could have a mine somewhere and, uh, you can, according to the current draft, you could just put your rocks on the next acre over and it'll produce, I'm being simplistic here, but it'll produce acid mine drainage. Um, and by the way, the Gilt Edge Mine is a federal, uh, superfund site. Um, uh, the costs, the federal government costs on that are going to sundown at some point. And the people of South Dakota will be responsible for this huge operation trying to rectify acid mine drainage, which by the way is perpetual. For the most part, it can't be contained. It just happens. So in the presence of sulfites. So, um, just very quickly on that, my other concern is that the draft that I've seen only says that, um, uh, the, uh, affected tribes will be informed, uh, about a potential of proposal for a mine site. Honestly, we need to respect our native citizens a lot better than that. They still have treaty rights to the Black Hills and, and, and certainly we need to consult with native citizens about, um, potential historical and cultural importance of any site that where a mine is proposed. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want, I didn't get the name. I apologize.
Oh, Carol. I have it, Hayes.
Hayes, Hayes, H A Y S E.
Thank you. Next speaker request form I have is from Carla Ray Marshall.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Carla Ray Marshall. I'm a member of the Shine River Sioux Tribe. I am, um, I live here in Pennington County. And, um, yeah, I have land up in Zebon County and I should become a mooch dawker. There's no lights out there in the middle of nowhere. Yeah, I've been, been wondering what I should do, you know, it's like my rent's too high here. So anyway, um, so I thank you for allowing me to speak today. I, I do want to say that I am a stern committee member um, for the Western Mining Action Network, which is a, um, which is an organization from Canada all the way down to Texas, North America. Um, and I have heard so many horrendous stories, um, regarding, um, communities fighting with mining operations that have already started and are contaminating and polluting perpetually throughout the United States and Canada. So with that, I want to mention, um, that, um, Dr. Lilly is starting, um, and I, we've been and others have been looking at, um, how many mining claims are going on in the Black Hills. Right now, just in Pennington County alone, there's 30,233 and that's just counting us as of today. We, we've been tracking these claims. I mean, you know, the Black Hills is under attack by these mining companies. And the better that we can, um, strengthen these, this ordinance, that's why I really appreciate you guys doing this because the, the more we can strengthen these, the more we'll deter the mining companies from coming in. So just a couple of things that, um, you know, I have already sent in a written, um, comment, um, but I was seeing a, seeing a couple of things here. Um, last time I mentioned about doing background checks on these mining companies in their application, in the application process. Um, so, um, on page, let's see, and I have this current one. It's
Yeah. So I, I want to make it clear that that's current Yeah, so I, I want to make it clear that that's currently being, um, revised and updated.
Okay.
And so I don't, um, I know that the comments that were received the first time that came, um, are currently, um, in staff's hands, and they're, they're in the, the, the current rewrite of that.
Right.
Um, so if you have comments regarding that-
Send them in.
That are different than the ones that you've already submitted, then I would encourage you to send, send those in.
Okay.
Um, but if, I, I don't, I want to waste your time by retalking through the things, because there's going to be a new version that comes out here in two, two and a half weeks, for the end of April meeting.
Yeah, and I did call in, um, because we had gotten notice that they said, well, that's going to continue in, on April.
Yep.
April twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Um, and so I called in, I was like, well, are you still going to allow comments on this? And I was told yes, so that's why I've been sitting here. So, and so the April twenty-fifth, are you going to allow comments then, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so it's, this, this, these types of things take several meetings, they take, they take numerous, um-
The long process.
Receive of comments, understanding how to address those comments, and then there's a research that has to be done to make sure that, 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 how those comments get applied to the document, um, are, are, are legal, or, you know, and, and those types of items. So I, that, that is a process that will continue after the redraft of those comments to, to be heard at the April twenty-fifth meeting. But I don't, um, please don't take my comments as I'm trying to not have you speak on them. I, I simply want to let you know the process.
Sure. Okay, um, yeah, well, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate you doing this, and I know it's going to be a long process, and I hope you take our comments into consideration, because we've been, a lot of us have been doing this for a long time. We've got to protect our water. We have to protect our water, our Black Hills water as a whole, because we don't know where it flows.
Yep.
Just like with that PFAS issue, you know? So I think, um, I greatly appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to restate, though, that if you have, um, comments in addition to the ones that you've already submitted-
Okay.
Please submit those to our staff, um, here at Pennington County, so they, they can, those get reviewed and, and incorporated for consideration into the document.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carla Rae.
Does anyone else want to speak? Yeah, please come forth. I think I remember you. You're Mr. Bell, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so, yes, my name is Richard Bell. I'm a professional engineer. I've done forty-plus years of environmental remediation and groundwater investigations, so I think I have some expertise in this area. And I did already submit some comments, and I appreciate you, uh, giving us a little better idea of the process, and I will submit this additional comment, but I thought I'd take the opportunity today to, before the planning, entire Planning Commission, to just indicate my concern about one specific part, and I'm referring to the draft that I, I, you know, uh, it's the only thing available that I have. It's on page nineteen. Uh, it's in section H two on groundwater monitoring. And, um, I would suggest that it be written, uh, as follows, and I, I will submit this in writing, but, um, rather than, uh, the way it's written, I would say, for all large-scale operations, the Board of Commissioners, as in a condition of approval for the hard rock mining permit, instead it may, shall require the applicant to perform baseline testing of three, not up to, but of three wells located within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed perimeter of the mining operations. Um, and then I would scratch the next sentence, and I would say, existing wells may be adjacent, uh, may be located on adjacent land where the property owners have requested testing in writing and granted permission for access to their properties. And then it goes on to say, but the baseline shall establish, yada, yada. It's, it's my experience, um, that, uh, it's critical for such large-scale mining operations, that you need to understand the groundwater conditions that exist there. And so, rather than, you know, based on specific conditions, let's just, you know, get the, the groundwater data baseline before the operation begins to understand exactly, you know, what, what's the existing conditions before this operation begins. So that's my suggestion. And I would also note, and I, I don't know how to clarify this, but maybe we could talk to staff later, but, uh, the location of those three wells is critical. You don't want to have three wells in a line. You need to triangulate to understand where groundwater flow directions occur. And so, something ought to be mentioned in there about the location of those three, three wells that would be required, in my view. And, uh, so that's my suggestion, and I appreciate you guys hearing, you know, something from someone who's been in the field and understands how to do these groundwater investigations. Let's find out what's there before the operation begins, and then, uh, we'll have a good baseline. Thank you very much.
You'll submit those comments to, to the Pennington County staff. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I have-
Mr. Bell.
Mr. Bell. I've got one question. And, and I wrote this down, establish a, a, a baseline water, but that would be at the cost of the, the applicant, the permitted applicant.
Correct. That's the way I understand it is, uh-
Oh, I just wanted to see that your, your change would include that it should be on the applicant to establish this baseline study.
Correct.
Groundwater baseline.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Bell? Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Thank you.
Um, to make sure no one else in the audience wishes to speak on this item. Noting none, staff recommends to continue OA twenty-two dash zero one to the April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Deb, on that. Item twelve, County Board report.
Uh, the Board of Commissioners will hear the Planning Commission's recommendations from the March fourteenth meeting, if they're April fifth meeting. Uh, ordinance amendment twenty-one twenty-five to amend the subdivision regulations. Uh, the new subdivision regulations were approved at the March fifteenth board meeting and will be effective April twentieth. I have sent that out, uh, to most of the surveyors and engineers in the area, so they are aware, um, when they're, um, proceeding with their planning process, so they know to look at the new ones. Um, and then ordinance amendment twenty-one twenty-two to add section three thirty efficiency dwellings, and ordinance amendment twenty-one twenty-three and twenty-one twenty-four that go along with the efficiency dwellings. Uh, those items were continued to an informal board work session on May twenty-fifth for further discussion.
Did we have a lady that needed to speak in the audience? Ma'am, did you need to speak on anything?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. I was going to bring that up during item from the public.
Efficiency dwellings, that tiny homes?
Yes.
Okay.
Further questions?
All right, Richard, I thought we were almost done.
Item thirteen, items from the public. Are you sure you don't want to come up and speak?
[laughing]
You're okay? All right. Items from staff, item fourteen. Anything from staff? Um, item fifteen, items from the membership. Question I have, um, one meeting ago or two meetings ago, um, there was some questions about, um, private single-use wells, not large deep wells. Were you able to gather any information that could be mailed out to the group to kind of educate us?
Yes, we have been, um, working with a staff member in our office about the priority with those. Um, it's difficult in the hills because of the convoluted geology of our area. Um, private wells do take precedence, and private wells that were constructed prior to other private wells takes, it's first in time, first in right. Um, so, and then you have to show, um, I'm trying to think of the terminology, adequate well. And so, when you look at adequate well, the state, D A N R, has a, a very, I guess, strict type of way that they look at what an adequate well is. So, um, those are some things that are taken into consideration, uh, when they consider whether that is being drawn down or not.
So, um, to get this straight in my brain, I always have to scenario things. Um, guy owns a lot, let's say two ten-acre lots right next to each other. Um, pokes a hole in the center of one, and goes down, but he's in some shallow alluvial aquifer, and he's not in a known aquifer, like the Madison, where there would be a water usage. So this is a private well, and it's restricted to eight, eighteen gallons per minute? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so eighteen gallons per minute. Guy next door, or gal, ten, another ten-acre lot, pokes a hole in the middle of that lot, and, um, and, and pulls eighteen gallons per minute out. Guy on the, uh, that, that drilled the first well on his lot, um, the neighbor, um, his, his lo, his well starts to run dry. Does he have some recourse then with the state on his neighbor's ten acres on the private well?
He may, um, because his was drilled prior to the other one. So the state looks at that, and like I said, it goes back to that adequate well criteria, and they have kind of specific criteria on what that means. Does it mean that they could drop the pump lower? Does it mean, there, there's a lot of different things that the state looks at.
Okay.
Um, for, but it's that first in time, first in right. So the individual drinking water wells that are constructed have priority, and then they go to the appropriated water rights. So there's some areas in the hills that are fully appropriated. There's some that are not appropriated at all, so they take all of those into consideration when they look at that.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it's, for lack of better terms, extremely complex. Um, it's a very complex, uh, but kind of the first in time, first in right is kind of when it comes to water rights, so.
Okay.
And then they prioritize them based on that.
Go ahead, Carol.
So would it be to the, the individuals, they would need to litigate that, or take that to the state? It's not up to the county. The county commission can't make a decision on that.
Correct, because the, the state is the one that basically occupies that field as far as water rights and allocation of water in the state. So that's, you know, done by the, that department.
The, the concern and the thing that I see come up, um, and, and I'll be brief on this, is that they, that, uh, we get one neighbor that comes in and says, well, I had to drop my well, you know, twenty feet, because, you know, the, everyone's taking all the water and, and some of those things. And the reality is, is that no one on this board understands the hydrogeology of the, their neighbors and, and how that underground groundwater network is, is going, and what aquifer they're in, how deep their well is, what the specific yields are, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, uh, sometimes that gets projected this way, and there's not enough facts to discern, um, one way or the other. So maybe it's just my comment from hearing these things, uh, several times. So thank you for the, for the update on that.
Here.
Um, that helps a lot, Charlie.
The depth of the well is one of the criteria, though, that's looked at very strongly.
So, yeah.
That's where my comment was, it, it used to be a rule of thumb, and I worked a lot with different pumping waters for irrigation to wells and whatnot. The depth of the well, my own, is in Slate Creek runoff that's underground. It's not in any aquifer. I'm getting it right from Slate Creek water that's running underground at fifty feet. That probably, in my opinion, would never be protected. There's no way to protect it.
That's an alluvial well, so it's different than-
Right.
Maybe a-
But that's, but I'm saying that there's so many wells that are in the Black Hills. I'm using myself as the example. At one time, we checked way back when we were doing the septic, and it was sixty to eighty percent of the wells in our own county were, were, uh, shallow wells. That's a lot, and it is going to come up in our conversations here, because I doubt, and I'm not saying it's for sure, I doubt whether you're going to get much protection from the state of South Dakota or anywhere else, or any court, when it's that situation. And that's so difficult for our citizens to understand. I mean, from your point of view, plus a, a chair of, of committee listening to these things. So I just want to make that clear, that one of the criteria is the depth and where it's come from. When you're not in an aquifer, and I have neighbors that are in aquifers, don't get me wrong, but the bulk of them are, I think we have twelve or thirteen neighbors, and there's three wells that go to an aquifer.
Brittany's been involved with a lot of water projects and a lot of stuff to do with D A N R and SWIPS, and, uh, yeah, she's pretty informed on a lot of that.
It, it's very complicated, to say the least. Um, and, I mean, we do have people that live in the hills, that live in the areas that haul water. I mean, there's cisterns. Uh, we don't differentiate, you know, when we issue building permits, you know, if they can haul water and they have a cistern, you know, it's, you know, it's adequate at this time, as far as our ordinances are concerned. Where it comes into play more is when we have these larger subdivisions.
Yeah.
Um, and I think those, you know, with our subdivision regulations, now we require a water plan to be submitted for review as part of the preliminary plan, so I think that's a way, too, that we could require other things, um, because it's a little bit more broad, um, in our subdivision regulations now, to, to look at some of the areas, because there may be some areas that very well could be in fractures and that are not actually in, you know, aquifers, or they're in alluvium type.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate that. Anything else from the membership?
The new word for the day is alluvial. Sorry, I have to bring that up.
Okay, next, last item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for adjournment, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.